To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call please.
Yes. Chairman Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Woman Kiefer.
Here.
Mr. Albrecht.
Here.
Mr. Di Maria.
Here.
Mr. Hamlin.
Here.
Mrs. Seberg.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Morales.
Here.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Thank you. Are there any additions and deletions to the agenda?
There are. To the consent agenda, under personnel, the ratification of personnel. And that will be it.
Thank you. Next up, superintendent's announcements and spotlights.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman, other members of the board. Good evening to everyone that is here tonight. I stand before you to present our spotlights for the evening. So if you all could join me down front, I appreciate it. We have a few students that we would like to recognize tonight. Tonight, I'm very privileged to present some outstanding students to you. Each year, the Manassas City Public Schools conducts spelling bees, positioning students to earn an opportunity to compete locally at the Prince William Regional Bee and ultimately at the Scripps National Spelling Bee, which is held annually in Washington DC. So several of our students are here tonight. We certainly want to thank their sponsors for working with them, their parents. We know that they probably spent hours and hours going over words and hearing them spell them back to them. So we certainly appreciate all of the work that went behind the scenes. Some of their sponsors are here tonight as well. So as I call the students' names, we're going to ask the sponsors that are here to join us up front as well. We'll start tonight with Round Elementary School, Victoria Ingram, and she's a 4th grader, with her sponsor Mary Stuckey. From Jenny Dean Elementary School, we have 4th grader Christopher Bastille. His sponsor is Carol Holssander. From Weems Elementary School, we have Rubelsi Majaro, 4th grader, and Heather James is the sponsor. From Baldwin Elementary School, Gabrielle Law, 4th grader, Jennifer Thompson sponsor. From Hayden Elementary School, Justin Manalanson, he's a 4th grader, Rachel Fadness is the sponsor. From Mayfield Intermediate School, Wahid Akhtar, 6th grader, Linda Ziole is the sponsor. From Baldwin Intermediate School, Ada Husband, 5th grader, James Meganheart and Rachel Kirkland are the sponsors. And from Metz Middle School, our 8th grader Connor Higsby, Lauren Vandevere is the sponsor. Alright, that's all of our schools. Congratulations to all of our superb spellers. We certainly congratulate all of you and thank you for all the hard work that you're doing at school each and every day. So we could just kind of scoot down this way a little bit. Yeah. And Paris, those that wanted to take a picture, you're welcome to do so. Did we get everybody? I didn't miss anyone, did I? Okay, great. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Radford. Next, Board Committee reports. Academics Committee, Ms. Seberg.
Yes. Academics Committee will meet Wednesday, April 18th, 5:00 PM, and the agenda will be posted in Board Doc the days preceding the meeting.
Thank you. Educational Support Committee, Mr. Di Maria.
No report, sir.
Policy Committee, Mrs. Kiefer.
No report.
Finance Committee, Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think everybody knows the budget is on tonight's meeting. That represents the accumulation of a lot of activity from the Finance Committee and this Board, because we treat the budget as a committee of the whole. It'll be presented tomorrow night to City Council.
Look forward to that, thank you. Personnel Committee, Mrs. Williams.
No report as of now.
Alright, thank you. Let's move on to Board Member comments, and we will start with our student representatives. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a pleasure to be here. I have a few comments for tonight. This year's senior class trip destination is Kings Dominion. The sign up must be done by Thursday, April 12th, in Mrs. Morgan's room. Senior class dues must be paid to attend the trip. Permission packet and $40 attendance fee are due next Friday, April 20th. Also, Eagle Writing Center tutors are hard at work at finishing their proposals for the upcoming Secondary School Writing Center Conference due this Thursday. And I have some personal news. I was recently accepted into NYU, which is really exciting. So that's where I plan on attending this fall. Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Next, Mr. Hernandez Morales.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I begin, it's just cool how I got to see those little kids again, because every time there's those little spotlights, it's like, I mean, I wish I could have been there, but I wasn't. So it's really cool that they were like, at this age, they were up there. I don't even know if Mr. Meganheart recognized me, he was in the far back. He's not here, but he was actually my teacher, so I was like, maybe if I was in his position, if I'm in their position, I'd be very proud of what I've accomplished. So congratulations to the students. And on behalf of the Osborne High School Theater Company, they are excited to present Fiddler on the Roof. I actually went down there last Friday to see what it was about, because it was, I guess, very hype. And I was like, I want to see what it's all about. And I actually saw our principal, Dr., oh, pardon me, Mr. Gabowski, and he was directing it. I was like, wow, that's cool, no wonder it's going to be great, no wonder everyone was excited. But I felt like the energy, just like from a couple seats far back, and I'm just, I really encourage anyone who wants to see these students perform Thursday, Friday, Saturday at 7:00 PM at Osborne. And yeah, if you want to go support them, go support them, thank you.
Thank you. Next up's School Board Member comments, starting with Mr. Di Maria.
Well, thank you, sir. Everybody's going to talk about the same thing, so I'm just going to touch on a couple of things. Mr. Albrecht already said that, you know, we're going to be presenting the budget tonight. I want to thank everybody who's had input on this. This is my 13th budget, I think. And the Board has always been good. Staff just keeps getting better and better. It's, sometimes it's easy, when you don't have any money, to try and figure out what to do, when there's not a whole lot of options. But the way things are presented to us throughout the year makes budget season so much easier than it used to be. It seems to me, it used to be, all of a sudden, spring would come and everything is dumped on us, and we've got to figure all this stuff out. Instead of figuring it out throughout the year, like we have been now, we seem to be more up to date all the time on what's going on, making the decisions easier. And it seems, if I was looking from the outside in, I would think that it was very easy, and it's not. There's a lot of things that are done, a lot of continuing education of the Board of what's going on. And so I commend our Finance Department and the fine work they've done, and everybody who works with them, because in our central office, there are divisions and departments, but it's all one, and I really appreciate all of that. Just want everybody to know also that we are working on our revenue agreement right now with the city. Our funding is not where it needs to be. Our funding from the state is not where it needs to be, and the funding from the city is not where it needs to be. So we're going to continue to work on that, and hopefully, we can let City Council know that, yeah, I'm looking. How important schools are. They are the most important thing there is. And so hopefully, we can let City Council know that. Spring sports are going on right now. Yeah, it's going to be spring on Thursday. It hasn't been spring yet, it's been tough to get out and sit at games. But go out and support our kids. It's what?
It's going to snow this weekend. I'm making it up.
He's been on the Board a long time, it's starting to get to him. And I'd like to commend baseball and softball particularly, because they have been doing this thing to where they're having a teacher throw out the first pitch and their class come to the games. And it's just really, really cool, because Osborne is all of our schools put together, and to incorporate our elementaries into our high school is just such a great idea and very important to get our kids, our elementary school kids, part of Osborne, because they're going to be part of Osborne for, you know, 12 or 13 years, from kindergarten all the way through 12th. And that's it, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Hamlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations to all our spelling bee winners. I'll be brief tonight, we have quite a bit to cover. I hope everyone had a rest-filled spring break and are now excitedly engaged as we prepare to enter the final quarter of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Seberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to add that prom is coming up, and there's an effort to keep our kids safe on prom night. After prom is the effort, and it's an all-night party after prom. And it keeps our kids off the streets, it keeps them engaged in doing fun activities. They have a great time, but we need your help. We need the community's help with donations of food, of prizes, and of volunteers. So if you are able to participate in some way, please look on Facebook for 2018 Osborne Eagles After Prom, or on the Osborne website. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams.
The only thing I really want to say tonight, above and beyond what Mr. Di Maria said earlier about our budget, is I wanted to thank the Athletic Boosters Club for the hard work that they did in getting a lot of the athletes together. They delivered, I can't tell you how many bags of mulch all day Saturday. It was a lot of hard work, and it took a lot of people to really work together as a team to make that such a success. So I wanted to thank the students for their hard work on Saturday. And that's really all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I feel like, I think I was in the windy city, but I wasn't in Chicago recently. I did last night, this morning, I got back from San Antonio at the National School Board Association Conference. And I think I've said it as I've traveled across Virginia, is we all have common problems. And going to professional development sessions, networking with peers from across the nation, that was reinforced. But what was even a stronger reinforcement to me personally was to see how well Virginia was recognized across the nation. They gave out about 25 awards for digital learning programs. The Commonwealth of Virginia received seven of them. There's about 10 Magna Awards given out by NSBA for excellence in education. Two of them went to Virginia. One of them, Newport News, was the grand prize winner, and it dealt with their English language learning challenges, and how they've had almost a 700% increase in their ELL population. You know, why is that relevant? Many of the things that were talked about in one awards, in the digital pieces, are things we're doing, footsteps to brilliance, one-to-one programs, everything else. And the challenges that Newport News has are some of the exact same challenges we have. We've all got the same set of challenges, whether it's accountability, a morphing, changing set of expectations, increasing poverty from children, English language learning, and as Mr. Di Maria alluded to, funding. Because no matter who I talk to, we all agreed, the federal government, every single state government, and every single state government is not doing what they say they should do to meet the expectations they set. Maryland just did it today. They passed a law that every high school should have an SRO, and didn't give a single penny for it. That just took a teacher away if you don't have an SRO. So our governments have to get smarter about the way they set our standards, and we have to decide what's important, and quit being politicians and saying we support education and not funding it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Kiefer.
That's hard to follow. I just wanted to extend a welcome to Councilwoman Pam Sibeski. She's going to make sure we find the money we need, so I'm glad you're here. No pressure. I too wanted to congratulate our spelling bee winners. As a former spelling bee participant myself, it's something you don't forget. You never forget the word you forgot. It haunts you for the rest of your life, but it's a really good experience to have. I too am going to be short, I just wanted to acknowledge it's National School Library Month. Our libraries and our schools, our librarians, they're a place for convening, they're a place for wrapping around what the kids are learning in classrooms and digitally, and in all other aspects. So we just need to acknowledge the importance of libraries and resources in our schools, and so I just wanted to acknowledge those who make sure our kids have those things. It's also volunteer appreciation next week. Our schools are helped by those in our community, community members, parents, PTOs. It takes a community to have schools. And so we continue to thank those who are involved, and to encourage others to get more involved in our schools so you can see all of the good things going on out there. So we thank those who put their hearts and souls into it every day. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mrs. Kiefer, I was talking about who we could acknowledge, to Mr. Sibeski first, and I told her she could go. But I would acknowledge her as well, as a school board member, thank you for being here. And I don't want to put pressure on you personally like she did, but thank you for your presence, we appreciate it. I'm also going to congratulate the honorabes tonight. It's great seeing children succeed at anything, but having them work as hard as you do in a spelling bee and that being is pretty difficult and challenging. So congratulations to them, and to their sponsors as well who weren't here. Finally, the three things I wanted to mention really quickly. Last month is Women's History Month. I planned to mention it during the second meeting of the month, but then I realized we didn't have a second meeting. But I did want to acknowledge that, so even though the month has passed, women's history sometimes gets passed over, and it's not covered like it should be. So I hope we all appreciate that. Women have made a great contribution in history, obviously, and something we should acknowledge. So next year, hopefully, we'll acknowledge it more fully. The second thing I wanted to acknowledge was, last week was the 50th anniversary of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s assassination in Tennessee. I shared with some board members last week that my wife and I took my daughter down to Memphis, to the hotel where he got killed. It's now a museum, and it's a phenomenal museum, something I encourage you to look at if you ever go down to Memphis. His passing had a huge impact on this country. I wasn't old enough to, you know, know it in the time that it happened, but I've heard from fellow members and parents and folks of all different races that his death really impacted the civil rights movement and also the movement for equality in society. One thing that frustrates me a little bit is that folks remember Martin Luther King's I Have a Dream speech, but he was so much more than that, he was fighting for the equality for everyone. So not just for African-Americans who are dealing with a special type of issue of racism, but with all folks who are just trying to succeed in society. And I hope that we remember that as we commemorate his anniversary of his death and also his birthday, and that he was fighting for equality for everyone, which is important. And segueing into my next point, Lynda Brown died a couple of weeks ago, aged 75. And you may not know who Lynda Brown is, but I'm sure you all heard of Brown vs. Board of Ed. It's something that is special to me in a sense, because in law schools, it's a similar case in constitutional law, but it's also a case where I could talk about and everyone else knew about it, because we heard about it. In 1954, Brown vs. Board of Education, to the US Supreme Court, the court said that separate but equal was no longer the law of the land. So children had a right to go to whatever public school they want. And today, I know I wasn't alive then, but I can't imagine looking at someone's color, ethnicity, and saying you can't go to school, a publicly unfunded school, because of how you look. Back then, that was the way it was, and there were many handless things that happened. However, with Brown vs. Board of Ed, we slowly but surely started making a change in our society. Despite that, we still have many issues. Issues of access, issues of equity, issues of equality, some racial and economic issues, but issues that affect all of us. Mr. Albrecht mentioned what I heard in San Antonio. There are issues that affect our entire society, so even though there are folks who live in areas where they're doing economically well, we still have unfunded mandates which harm our education. If it harms our education system, it's going to harm our children. So we, as a society, need to make a decision at some point. Are we going to keep talking, as Mr. Albrecht said, and saying, ah, we're up for education when we like education, or we're going to put our money where our mouths is, we're up where our mouths are, and make a difference? Because it's very, very important that we want our kids to grow up, to have a society where they can, we can be proud of them, they can be proud of them, they can succeed in this global economy. We need to give them the tools they need to reach their potential. So we keep talking about it, but hopefully, together, we can keep pushing towards a goal where we can really reach the equality that Martin Luther King preached about. And that'll be, I mean, for me, off my soapbox. Moving on, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and I have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the School Board, City Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified.
Second, second.
Motion by Mr. Di Maria, first, second, and third, is Mr. Seberg. The School Board, the City Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The Irish carry 7-0. And Mrs. Gaisa reminded me that I skipped citizens' comments. So are there any citizens who signed up, that's probably why I skipped it? Are there any citizens who would like to comment? Great, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Gaisa. Next up, discussion agenda. We'll start with Old Business Superintendent's search, and I'm going to read what seems to be a weekly reading. In accordance with the Code of Virginia, Sections 2.2-3712 Part B, the City of Manassas School Board announces that it will be meeting in closed session solely for the purpose of interviewing candidates for the position of Division Superintendent. The closed session will be continued or immediate after 15 days from the date of this announcement. The closed sessions will occur at an undisclosed location to protect the privacy of candidates. Next item of discussion agenda, Funding Operations, FY 2018-19 Student Fees and Charges, Building Use Fees and Fee Waver Policy, Mr. Hawkins.
Good evening. Tonight, we're on the discussion agenda to give a first reading to school year, or fiscal year 2018-2019, student fees and charges. Can you pull up on the screen? The first screen is about, you know, the normal fees and charges. There are no changes in these rates from the current year to next year. We're not planning any, or not proposing any changes in this area. But I do want to make the Board aware, our next meeting will be updating the Board on a new initiative where parents will have the opportunity to pay for all of these fees electronically, online. If they choose this method of payment, a 3.95% convenience fee will be added to these fees. This form of payment is totally optional to the parent, or to grandparents, or whoever pay the fee, but it's just for the convenience of being able to make those payments, if they so choose. The next sheet is the building fees, building rental fees. There have been some changes made into this area. For example, if you were to refer back to last year's sheet, you would notice there's only two columns, one for elementary and one for secondary, where the intermediate and the middle schools were included in the secondary. This year, we've separated them out into three different columns. What we did is that we took our current rates and compared them with Prince William County Schools' rates, and adjusted the MCPS rates to be aligned with the local market. We did this without changing the hourly cost for the football and baseball fields with stadiums at the high school, in an effort to protect this substantial investment that has been made in these areas. In the proposed fees effective July 1st, we have separated them in three categories. Some of the items that you'll see that are different, I will just highlight a few of them. Where the auditorium fee was $50 per hour for all levels, now it's $30, $40, and $50 based on the different level, for elementary, middle, and high. Cafeteria without a kitchen, where the current fee structure was $50 per hour for all levels. You can see now that we've got it at $35, $45, and $55. If you go on down, you'll see where the gymnasium, where we had it under the old, under the current schedule, was $70 an hour for all levels, is now $40, $50 at middle school, $50 at the high school level. The track, current formula was $185 an hour. Now, under this proposal, it's $50 an hour, or $250 per day. So the, you know, football fields with lights is $45 an hour under the current rate structure. Now, there would be $20 per hour, middle school, and $20 per hour for the high school. Those rates, by the way, were, we were determined, we received assistance on determining the hourly rate for those from two different sources. One from the city utility department, and one from our Energy Performance Contractor, Johnson Controls. They did an evaluation to assist us of how much the utilities would run for football field lights. And they both came back, they're $20 an hour. With the baseball field lights, the current rate is $30 an hour. We're proposing that be changed to $20 an hour. You know, parking lots was $200 a day, now we're proposing to be $50 a day. Special trash pickup fee was $100 a flat fee. Now, we're proposing that it would be a $200 flat fee. And I won't go through the commercial fees, but they are comparable. You can see what we've done. Like I said before, these changes were made in an effort to adjust our fees to be in agreement with our local market. The fee waiver guidelines are the next part of this. There have been no changes into the fee waiver guidelines from the current year to what we're proposing for fiscal year 19. So at this point, if there are any questions, concerns, comments?
Alright, thank you, Mr. Hawkins, I'm sure there are questions.
Okay.
Mr. Albrecht?
Mr. Hawkins, I'm going to start with student fees, and I'll make an observation.
Okay.
I would strongly encourage me looking at the fee we're charging parents, guardians, or the student fees. I recognize processing fees associated with electronic transactions, but I would think if we absorbed those costs, we would more than make up for it in the administrative cost of not having to worry about cash, not processing checks, not having to hound anybody for the payment of anything. We're presenting a disincentive to make it look like we're dealing in e-commerce, and no one will use it because it's perceived as a tax.
Okay.
Just a personal perspective.
Well, thank you, that will help us when we come forward with the proposal next month.
And then when I look at the building fees, and I respect we're trying to deal with the market, at the same time, Mrs. Williams and I are on a committee with the city, looking at joint use. And I feel like our changing these fees at this time, we're putting our cart before the horse, because we don't know what the council, what the school board intend to do as far as sharing the use of facilities. And I think by changing just to address the market, we're potentially sending a signal, not sending... not sending a signal, I don't know what it means, but we really haven't had anything more than a field trip right now and had those discussions. So we're cautious about this board taking an action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Albrecht?
Mr. Albrecht, these are just updating these numbers, though, right? We can always, depending on what happens with the city, we can always change them again for use for the city. These numbers are for non-city use. Is that correct, Mr. Hawkins?
Well, at the current point in time, we don't have a comprehensive agreement with the city
Right.
on facility use.
So then we
We do have Facility Use Committee aborted by the School Board and the City Council, and we've met at least a couple of times. And I, but we do need to get that committee back together to determine whether or not Mr. Albrecht is right in the fact that we do need to get together and determine whether we want to have a comprehensive approach to this citywide, and work through the city parks and rec, and have a uniform fee and rental process. And so, but there's, we're, we're not that far yet into this process. So we can either, we can do one of, or I guess I can think of at least two things we can do. We can stick with the current fee schedule as it is right now, and wait until this committee gets together, makes a final decision. Or another alternative is the one that I presented tonight, where we adjust the fees right now to the, to the market, and then we, we still, either way, we still have an opportunity to go with the city and have a, have a comprehensive approach.
Sir, we have a fee schedule, no matter, if we make no decision, if we make no, take no action, we still have, have a fee schedule that's going to have to be changed if we make an agreement with the city anyway, correct?
Correct. But we, we do need to have before the start of the fiscal year, a fee schedule of some sort adopted, whether it be the current one we have now, or, or something different.
Does it run out, then?
It, it was approved annually
Okay.
by the School Board.
Okay. Things to think about. And you've got a price for the Mets Gym and for Osmond's Gym, $50 an hour. We have two gyms at Osmond. Would that, is that going to be for both of them? Would that be the simplest way to do that?
Yes, sir.
Whichever available, okay. Thank you, sir.
There are the comments.
I'll get Phil Becker to answer, Mr. Hawkins. At the risk of negotiating to Medaya, is my concern, Mr. Di Maria, is we are devaluing the value we place on our facilities by lowering the price today.
Ah, are they, okay. Well, we can look at it, and I'll have to look at it closer.
So we're going to, this will be on the, I guess we're proposing that we'll have this item on the next School Board agenda as, as an action item. Maybe we should, or maybe we should have further discussion, maybe?
I think we should have further discussion. I would propose, since we don't have to have it in place by the next meeting, that we have some discussions offline, see if we can get
Okay.
further with the city discussions, and see how long that'll take. And then once we know how long it'll take, we can decide either we'll, you know, keep what we have in place, or we'll do this until we come to a good conclusion. But I don't think we should have it on the action link quite yet. So I'd push it off for at least another meeting.
Thank you.
You want to think, sir? That would, that's a good idea, that would give time for Mr. Albrecht to set me straight.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Hawkins, for working this. I know it's not easy, I mean, it took some time, not for you and your staff, to get the comps, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, action agenda. First item on the action agenda is finance and operations, FY 2019 School Board Budget.
So after nearly several months of school board meetings and work sessions, and many staff hours reviewing and analyzing MCPS operations, I'm pleased tonight to be here to present the FY 19 School Board Proposed Operating and Capital Improvement Plan budgets. As with every comprehensive review, we, we had to analyze where we have, where we have been, basically, what factors has affected our instructional programs and operations. As this slide illustrates, over a 10-year period, MCPS student enrollment has increased over 18% and is still growing at approximately 2% annually for the foreseeable future. Our students of poverty have increased over 220% and unfortunately, still growing, while our funding for these students on a per-student basis is decreasing. These changes in our student population have placed pressures on the school division to meet their needs with increases in capital infrastructure, technology infrastructure, and additional resources to meet their basic needs such as textbooks and materials and supplies. With almost 2/3 of our student population being classified as economically disadvantaged, and 50% of our student population receiving services to become fluent in the English language, MCPS faces unique challenges that are different from other school divisions in Northern Virginia. This chart documents the amount of funding MCPS receives on a per-student basis from our city partners, the state, and federal government. While the division's state revenue has increased approximately 48% during this period, sad to say, but primarily due to increased poverty in our community, the division's city funding has actually decreased at approximately 1% throughout this 10-year period. So it's 1% increase. Doesn't sound like much, right? But this chart documents what a dramatic impact not keeping up the rate of inflation has had on MCPS. In this chart, if you start with the 2006 per-student contribution of 62, 65, and just add the rate of inflation throughout the years, nothing felt special, no other big projects. The city's per-student contribution would be $7,759, or approximately $11.9 million more. $11.9 million more. In reality, we all know that we've had big projects, from the building of Baldwin Elementary and Intermediate School, Gillen Field, to major upgrades in technology, infrastructure, and computers for our students and teachers, to finally millions of dollars expended to upgrading the building infrastructure at all of our schools. Also during this time period, when the rate of inflation increased approximately 21%, the school board had to pay for health insurance increases, which equated to 5% to 12% annually, and teacher-staff salary increases approximately 2% annually. All of this adds up to the school board doing more, a lot more, with less. It minimizes the school board is in the perfect storm. Increases in student population equals increased need for capital investment. Increases in student poverty and English as a second language population equals increased need for student support. Changes in real-world technology equals the need for major technology, infrastructure upgrades, and integration of computers into the classrooms, all the while maintaining at a high level our existing building infrastructure, school bus fleet, and hiring and retaining quality instructional support staff. A very, very tall order indeed. This chart documents the requested needs of the school, schools and departments totaling After detailed review of each request, the review of our current operations, and our projected revenue from all sources, the principal, the principal, central office leadership, and the superintendent came to an agreement of a proposed budget of $100,828,541, which was presented to the School Board on February 13th. These actions reduced the proposed budget by approximately $9.4 million. Since that time, the School Board has held four budget work sessions to discuss the true needs of the school division. This slide documents the funding from all sources. City funding based on, the city funding is based on a funding agreement agreed to in October 2015 between this, between the city and the School Board. State funding is based on the governor's proposed budget, which is unusual at this point in time. Since the General Assembly adjourned from their session this year without adopting a budget, the governor has called them back into special session beginning tomorrow, April 11th, to hammer out a budget. It's unknown at this time how long, or what will be the final outcome. Therefore, once this budget is adopted by the General Assembly and signed by the governor, the School Board will probably need to revise this budget to be in agreement with the projected state funding. Slide 8 continues to delineate the School Board funding to the Food Services Fund, and to Federal Grants Fund, and to the operating budget, which we, we will talk primarily about tonight. Slide 9, here, talks about documents, documents that break down the operating fund expenditures with approximately 84% of all funding expended on salary benefits. All school divisions are labor-intensive operations, and this breakdown is typical of school division expenditures throughout the Commonwealth and the nation. Chart before you now is the Capital Improvement Plan for FY 19. The proposed Capital Improvement Plan for FY 19 totaled $3.3 million, which is $400,000 less than in the current year. Incorporated in this plan are division-wide technology, infrastructure upgrades, funding to keep our school bus fleet in compliance with VDOE guidelines, and funding to purchase additional school buses as needed for increases in student growth. Majority of the funding is to develop and design, a design for the new dean at Intermediate School scheduled to open in August 2022. Earlier, I mentioned that we, I discussed the reductions that were made in requests from the schools and departments. This slide, and the following slides document reductions that were made in order to match MCPS funding with expenditures. So we have about $8.5 million here, personnel reductions, non-personnel. We'll go into some of those in detail now. So these are some of the new budget requests. We, we were asked to have a greeter at, at Baldwin, or we had a finance support technician, or administrative associate at Osborne, EPEDs. You see a myriad of different requests from departments and from the schools. Non-personnel, you know, musical instrument replacement cycle, we, we, we do need to replace some of our musical instruments. We are conducting a study now to determine the exact need and cost, and we'll be back in the, in the next budget cycle, probably to be asking for funding for replacement, or, or come up with a replacement cycle for musical instruments throughout our division. We have things like information technology request of $1.6 million. That continues to be a dominant request from our, from our schools, and, and to enhance the delivery instruction to our, to our students. Budget request program support, you can see where, you know, PCG and SQUIB are current vendors with us, and we will be, we're proposing to terminate our agreement with, with those firms. But you also see other things in there for hourly after-school remediation, regional tuition program, funding decreases. We have some unfilled FTEs. I want to make sure, make it very clear to everyone watching this program tonight, that these positions were not filled in the current budget year, in FY 18, the year that we're living in now. And so we are eliminating those positions from FY 19 budget. So there will not be any, since they're unfilled now, there will not be any, any staff person losing their position going forward. So these are perpetual budget requests that happen every year, have been happening multiple times over, over many years, that are things that seem to be pushed back every year that we would really like to enhance. A gifted and talented program, we would all like, I think, to reduce our bus, bus rotation or tier schedule from, from top five tiers to four, so all of our elementary children could get home at approximately the same time. And in technology, computer science, you know, additional teachers in, in our curriculum So the, the School Board and its adopted strategic plan set forth a need, an established need to hire and retain highly qualified teachers. To accomplish this goal, the School Board directed the superintendent to create a salary benefits committee, to compare the MCPS salary scale and benefits to the market, and determine what other areas should be explored to attract, hire, and retain high-quality teachers. On this slide, you can see the issues discussed, and on the next two slides, the scope of the deficiencies of the MCPS salary scale in comparison to Prince William County salary So when you start looking at, at this slide, you can see where, this slide documents a history of MCPS salary scale for a beginning teacher with a BA degree. This document illustrates that MCPS has been competitive in the marketplace throughout many of these years, but that ended in 2015. Starting in 2016, MCPS began to be less competitive, and is currently not competitive in the market. This slide shows where a master's degree teacher, where most of our teachers, the majority of our teachers are on this, on this scale, is even more out of alignment in the marketplace. You'll see that MCPS falls out of contention at approximately year seven, and falls further behind every year thereafter. As a result of these findings, and the absolute necessity for this school division to hire and retain a highly qualified teaching staff, this budget continues to fund our current instructional program, while also matching the local market salary scale, and incorporating a step increase for all teachers. I stated that this is an absolute necessity, since every instructional study has shown that the best and most effective classroom asset in every classroom is a highly qualified teacher. Not textbooks, not technology, but teachers. Salary scale step increases have also been incorporated to help us hire and retain support staff and administrators. So again, we are, we're showing you a breakdown of the funds from city funds. We have from per the city funding agreement, or the joint resolution agreement, receiving over $57 million from the city, with $3 million of it going to the Capital Projects Fund, approximately 6.2 into debt service, and the remainder going into operating fund. The other $100,000 is an estimate based on city profit funds. And you can see that our state funds are a little over $52 million right now, but that, again, that's based off on the, of the governor's budget. The General Assembly has not adopted a budget at this time. One of the things that I'm most proud of and most happy for this school division is the, is the financial standing that it has now by not depending on the use of fund balance to balance its operating budget. The use of fund balance shown on the, on the chart, it relates totally to the Food Service Fund, not to our total operating fund. So we're not, we're not paying for our current expenses by using, by using fund balance. This last chart documents all the meeting meetings that we've had throughout this year to, to get to where we are tonight. Like Mr. Albrecht spoke to us earlier tonight, announced that we will be meeting with City Council tomorrow night, 6:00 p.m., to, to discuss our budget, our FY 19 budget proposal. So at this time, Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY 19 budget as presented, and authorize the school, and authorize the School Board Chairman to transmit these estimates to City Council of Manassas in accordance to City Council of Manassas in accordance with the School Board Policy, Virginia State Code, and the Joint Budget Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, the School Board of City of Manassas approved the 2018-19 budget in an amount of $117,921,228 as presented. And authorize the School Board Chairman to transmit these estimates to the City Council of the City of Manassas in accordance with School Board Policy, the Virginia State Code, and the City School Board Joint Budget Agreement.
Second. Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Demaria, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the FY 2018-2019 budgets presented in the amount of $117,921,228 and authorize the School Board Chairman to transmit these estimates to the City Council of Manassas in accordance with School Board Policy, Virginia State Code, and the Joint Budget Agreement. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Albrecht. Chairman, let me start by thanking the board and staff. This was a professional budget cycle focused on the data, focused on student achievement, and doing what's right for the children of Manassas so that we can get the results we're looking for, while recognizing difficult decisions we were in with respect to a lot of things. The salary schedule obviously being the elephant that Mr. Hawkins ended with, when we'd seen a almost 20% increase in student enrollment over the period of time we talked about. That's about 700 kids for our school, so that means we incurred a lot of debt service to pay for additional classrooms at a point in time when we actually get 2% less money over that same period with 20% inflation. And you think about the things that are in our budget, it's healthcare, 12% increase this year alone. We all feel that pain, by the way, all of us that work, we see it every day, all of us. Healthcare in this country, that's a whole separate debate we can have. The cost of fuel. We run a lot of buses and a lot of miles, and where those costs are, and all of us put gas in our car, we deal that pinch. The rest of the utilities, the gas, the water, the electricity, and then finally the wages. And we're really about $10 million short, based upon where the superintendent and staff think we really should be, but we can make what we have work. What I'd suggest is we can make what we have work this year, and it's the three-year agreement we're getting ready to renegotiate for the future that will drive our education in the City of Manassas really is going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Concerns to Maria?
We're going to discuss the salary schedule again in a few moments, but what I want to say is that the salary schedule, hopefully, will keep teachers from leaving our district. Hopefully, it will make it easier to recruit teachers to our district, and that's very important. But mostly, in my eyes, the most important thing about getting the salary structure where it is now or where it's about to be is because our teachers deserve it. Our children are doing wonderful things. They are growing up to be wonderful people, and we need to pay the people that are helping us so much, get them there fairly. The rest of it is residual. Keeping them and getting new teachers will be nice, but it's about time we paid our teachers what they deserve. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Other comments?
Well, I'll make one really quickly. We're going to talk about a couple of the things, specifically the salary schedules going forward. But first, I want to thank the staff, especially from out there in the audience. You did an awesome job putting things together, trying to make some change up what we had so we can make sure we give our teachers what they deserve, and we appreciate your hard work. And for folks who don't know, we've seen this many, many times, the budget, the School Board members have, so we're not sitting here just like, you know, uninterested, men and women, we've seen it many times. We appreciate your help and your diligence. We couldn't have been without you. The salary schedule. Our teachers deserve to be paid well, Mr. Maria put it, put it well, but not just because they come to work and deserve a pay raise. I've said and always thought, and I think I've heard Mr. Bushnell and also Mr. Albrecht say the same thing, Mr. Bushnell's a former school member, that educating our children is a moral imperative. And if we want to educate our children, we need to give them the best teachers they can possibly have. And our teachers deserve to be compensated for the work they do because it's important work. We've seen across the country in different states, Oklahoma, West Virginia, Kentucky, teachers who love their kids or love their students actually walking out and not teaching. They're not doing this in the lot. They're doing this because they can't even be paid enough money to take care of their families. That's a crime. I think, again, as I mentioned earlier, as a country, we need to, you know, rectify this and address our educational deficiencies. This is a start. So I commend our staff. Our teachers and staff are coming to us and letting us know that they saw our issues. And the board, we're trying to do the best we can, what we have right now, to address something that should have been addressed a while ago, but we just weren't finally able. But thank you all again for your, for your input, and thank you for your great comments. So with a motion on the table, I guess we should take a vote. I guess I should have the motion again, just stood, abide by the rules of orders. Our motion on the table is that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved FY 2018-19, 2019 budget as presented in the amount of $117,921,228, and authorize the School Board Chairman to transmit these estimates to the City Council of Manassas in accordance with School Board Policy, Virginia State Code, and the Joint Budget Agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes, carrot, seven, zero. Thank you. Next, FY 2019-2023 Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, five-year forecast. And I wasn't going to do this, wasn't going to do this, but I'll say this is Dr. McGord's last budget, so thank you for your input into it as well. I appreciate your, your work on this.
Okay, the, go back to the capital improvement plan. Thank you, Albrecht. The five-year capital improvement plan is shown has an estimated cost of $71,533,000, which includes the design and construction cost of Dean Intermediate School, which represents 76% of this total, and $6,192,000 for apartment home for the central office, which equates to approximately 8.66% of this total. So just those two projects together, combined, equate to 85% of the total CIP. Of the $71,533 in the total projected expenditures, $56,533, or 80% is used, is from the use of bonds to produce Dean Intermediate School and a central office, which when completed will be valued at $60.4 million. Included in the five-year plan is incorporation of secured vestibules at all schools, a roof replacement at Mayfield, HVAC replacement at Van De Elementary, and $1 million in technology upgrades, and $2.9 million in replacement and additions of school buses. So if, if, are there any questions, concerns, comments about the five-year CIP?
Mr. Chairman, the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the 2019-2023 Capital Improvement Plan, the 2019, do you have the forecast yet?
Yeah, I'll do the forecast next, if you'd like, please.
As presented, and authorize the School Board Chairman to transmit the CIP to the City Council of Manassas in accordance with School Board Policy, Virginia State Code, and the Joint Budget Agreement.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Kiefer, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved FY, the school year 2019-2023 Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, and five-year forecast is presumed. I have that here, so. For you guys to have the forecast. The FY 2019-2023 Capital Improvement Plan, and authorize the School Board Chairman to transmit the 2019-2023 CIP to the City Council of Manassas in accordance with the School Board Policy, Virginia State Code, and the Joint Budget Agreement. Is there any discussion?
I don't want to keep thanking you, I think it's kind of old. This is just like our budget even more. We've been seeing this every meeting for 400 years. I mean, it just keeps coming up, and we keep tweaking it and tweaking it and getting it better and better and better. And it's so clear, and it's been out there for so long. Anybody who has any questions, it's there, it's for everybody to see. I think you've done a wonderful job. I think the board has done a wonderful job on this as well as we did with the budget, so thank you for that.
Mr. Albrecht. I echo Mr. Demaria's comments. I reflect back on 16, 17, 18 years, sitting on this dais and where our facilities were then, with leaking roofs, with, we think we have problems now with four versus five bell schedule, we have trouble keeping buses running. With where we are and the discipline and the rigor, and we do it in our households, if you take care of it, it will last. You walk in our schools, and they are beautiful, and our facilities people respect them and take care of them like it's their home, and it shows. And we continue to make the investment to make sure they have what it takes to keep the best possible learning environment out there. And the CIP shows it, we're actually able to, because of that great maintenance, we've been able to not only build buildings, but put in a great state.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No, I have one comment, sorry. Because while we were talking, I was looking up the Manassas City 2016 Important Satisfaction Rating from a City of Manassas survey. And when you talk about category of services from the city, from our citizens who took the survey, the number one priority was flow of traffic and ease of getting around the city, Route 28, right? And second, quality of public education is a priority for our citizens, and I think the city really, really needs to take a really close look at what's important to their citizens. And, you know, that's the purpose of doing the survey, to really find out what is most important to the citizens. I just wanted to add that as well.
Thank you. Good point. Any comments?
If not, I'll just chime in with, thanks for the transparent CIP. It's great that we can, and the community can look at what we're doing and where we're going. And thank you to the staff, Mr. Albrecht's comments responding about how our facilities, you know, look wonderful, we do a great job of taking care of them. So the staff's to be commended, and we're to be commended as well, so thank you. So other comments? And a motion that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved FY 2019-2023 Capital Improvement Plan, and authori, as presented, and authorize the School Board Chairman to transmit 2019-2023 CIP to the City Council of Manassas in accordance with the School Board Policy, Virginia State Code, and the Joint Budget Agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes, carrot, seven, zero.
Okay. So we're just going now is the, is the five-year forecast. Starting off with 2017 actuals, but we're also showing a revised budget for FY18, and the, and the budget projections going out through FY 2023. State revenue is based on, or the current one projected for FY 2019 is based on the Governor's proposed budget estimate that we have right now. Each year thereafter, it's based on an estimated projection, projected increase of 2% annually. The federal government, federal revenue is, is left flat throughout the entire year, throughout the years. We don't, we don't really know where that will be going in the future, so that might be another area where we might have to revise the budget in the upcoming months is when the Congress gets together and adopts a, an annual budget. The other revenue is primarily building revenues, other miscellaneous revenue. We've, we've increased that by one or two percent, I think it's 2% annually throughout that period. City revenue is based on the funding agreement that we have established within now, which increases annually at 2.625%. FY19 is the last year of this, of this funding agreement, and I think as Mr. Albrecht has mentioned tonight, we are renegotiating with the City Council and their Finance Committee now to create another three-year funding agreement that will go through 2022. But these numbers that are presented tonight are based on our current agreement. Our expenditures, the school operating fund, FY19, of course, is based on our budget that we have tonight, that we've adopted tonight, and the funding for, the expenditures for FY 20 through 23 all are increased at an annual rate of 2%. As you can see, our grant funds stayed constant throughout the years, it's mainly federal funding, and our food service fund remained constant throughout that period as well. As we go down and we look at the capital improvement fund, we'll see where we have plugged in, you know, the $52,569 in, in bonds is primarily, is totally for building a Dean Elementary, oh, not an Elementary Dean, an Intermediate School. And the following year is additional funding for, needed for providing apartment home to central office staff. As you can see, when we go down to the debt service fund, our debt service currently is at $6.3 million. In FY 20, it will jump up about a million dollars, but then we start paying back, or having payments for money that we borrowed for Dean in the youth school, and the debt service will go from $7.3 million to $11.2 million, and roughly level off from there and begin, start going down after FY 22. Next one, next category is projected fund balance. You can see that our, our fund balance is projected to be healthy and stable through FY, through, at next year, FY19, we're predicting there will be approximately $2.4 million in the operating fund and another million dollars in the food service fund. And FY 20, based on our current projections, we're still, with those funds combined, be approximately $2.8 million in fund balance. It's where we start going into FY 21, that we will, we will start, have to either have additional funding from City Council through this funding agreement, or additional reductions will need to be made throughout the operating budget to stay within our allocated resources. By the way, you know, in these out years, it's not, it's, you know, we have in the past experienced at Times Square, we've, we've had the numbers out in the, in these out years. So while it's not unusual, they are, will be substantial in the coming years if additional funding is not acquired from, from city or state revenue sources. Are there any questions, concerns, comments about the, the five-year forecast?
Mr. Chairman, the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the 2019-2023 five-year forecast as presented, and authorize the School Board Chairman to transmit this schedule to the City Council of the City of Manassas in accordance with the City of Manassas School Board Policy, Commonwealth of Virginia State Code, and the Joint Budget Agreement.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht. Second by Mrs. Kiefer, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the FY 2019-2023 five-year forecast as presented, and authorize the School Board Chairman to transmit the 2019-2023 five-year forecast to the City Council of Manassas in accordance with the School Board Policy, Virginia State Code, and Joint Budget Agreement. Is there any discussion?
Couple of comments, just everyone's panicked, that Mr. Hawkins and I alluded to finding central office a home, or central office isn't homeless. We're at a long-term lease right now, and indications are the city would like to, is they build a new public safety facility, give us the building and the land associated with that, and allow us to engage in some renovations of it. So again, looking for what's right across the, the town. And Mr. Hawkins also pointed out, when we go red, you start looking at 2021, we're running about a 2% deficit per year. It's exactly what we've talked about earlier in the budget, as we look about who's going to fund it, and if you look at the, what's going on nationally, and what's going on across the Commonwealth, the burden has been put on localities to pay for education. The state and the federal government get to tell us what to do, and then all of us get to decide at the local level how to pay for it. We have increased enrollment that will continue to increase, and our expenses are going to increase, and that's what that's showing right there. So again, that three-year revenue agreement we're looking at right now, the midterm funding, and I'm going to put three years in the midterm. and I'm going to put three years in the midterm, not the long-term basis, of the city school system is at a precipice.
Thank you. Any comments? If you have other comments, we can motion again.
A motion by Mr. Albrecht, seconded by Mrs. Kiefer, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the FY two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three five-year forecast as presented and authorize the School Board Chairman to transmit the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three five-year forecast to the City Council of Manassas in accordance with the School Board Policy, Virginia State Code, and Joint Budget Agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it seven zero. Thank you. Next up, school start and dismissal times.
Mr. Chairman, for a prosper month, we've been discussing options for changing the school start and dismissal times. School Board has authorized the release of a survey to all affected parents and staff. Mr. School Board has received copies of the results of that survey. And we have asked for public comment on March thirteenth and tonight concerning this topic. On the screen is the current dismissal times, I mean, starting dismissal times. Schedule has been in place for a prosperous few years. Staff and families of Williams and Baldwin, we're told that they would have an opportunity to switch their times with Hayden Round, once Baldwin and Williams opened. You know, we had concerns at the time whether the VRE schedule was going to impact school traffic. We've been pleasantly pleased with the outcome of that, that it has not impacted school traffic. And, you know, like a lot of our schools, there's a ten-minute period of congestion with students, staff, and parents coming into all the schools. So, our code start and stop times, Metz, school starts time at seven twenty, dismisses at two twenty, Mayfield, Baldwin, and intermediate to seven thirty-five to two forty. And we'll see, the schools that we're talking about, Hayden Round are eight thirty-five to three forty-five, Baldwin and Williams, Agnano five to four fifteen. Dean is not considered as a part of this rotation simply because of their location and the manifestive that it takes to transport the students of that school. One of the, the first option would be to switch, just switch Baldwin and Williams Elementary. Dean should not be there, you know, on that slide. I'm sorry about that. I shouldn't say Dean. Should just say Baldwin, Williams Elementary with Hayden Round, and switch the start and dismissal times.
Mr. Hawkins?
That's correct, that's correct, yeah. They're, Dean's staying there, right.
Oh, right, okay, I'm sorry. Dean would stay there, you're right. Sorry. Option, option two, option two would be switching Mayfield, Baldwin, and the youth schools with Metz Middle School, flipping their time, where Mayfield and Baldwin, with, intermediate schools would start first at seven twenty, and Metz Middle School starting at seven thirty-five. And also, switching Baldwin, Dean, Williams Elementary with Hayden and Round Elementary. This would have some benefits for, as I said, lowered amount of congestion over between Baldwin and Immediate and Osborne, that gives some time for that area to clear out between the times that Baldwin and Immediate opens and Osborne High School begins, to get all staff, students, and it'll help alleviate some of that congestion in those areas. The third option would be, start times would change just for Mayfield and Baldwin and Intermediate. It would be switched with Metz, and the elementary schools would continue on to follow their current schedule. You know, again, the main benefit for switching Baldwin and Intermediate, the intermediate schools with Metz as far as the start and stop times, is it would prevent, would help prevent some of the mixing between Osborne High School traffic and Baldwin and Immediate student levels, and it would help ease some of the congestion in those areas. You know, and I think one of the other reasons too is that the change for Metz students supports resource and encourages the start times for secondary students. So, you know, with this, we're recommending, Mr. Chairman, that the School Board approve option two for the beginning of the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year, and that is switching the times for both the intermediate school and for the elementary schools, Baldwin, Williams, Hayden, Round.
Thank you. Any other motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the superintendent's recommendation for option two, that is, the start times for Mayfield and Baldwin would be a switch with Metz Middle School and Elementary School Baldwin and Williams, switch start time Hayden and Round. Going to be effective beginning of the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Mr. Chairman, I'll also add that if this decision be reevaluated by April two thousand and twenty-two, if New Dean Intermediate is not under construction, so it will keep you on a four-year cycle.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, seconded by Mr. O'Handley, and I may have to have your
help with reading any of that motion again, but, my motion is that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the superintendent's recommendation for option two, start times for Mayfield, Baldwin, and Intermediate, switch with Metz Middle School, and Elementary Schools Baldwin and Williams, which start time with Hayden Round, to go into effect at the beginning of the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. And this decision be reevaluated by two thousand and twenty-two?
April.
April two thousand and twenty-two. And I'm going to get the second part of that.
I said if New Dean Intermediate is not under construction.
If New Dean Intermediate is not under construction.
It's called the readjusting of all the bell schedules.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Kiefer?
I respectfully disagree with option two, and would like to speak in favor of option three. After reviewing all the public comment and taking the tally, the most preferred option is option three. And I think we need to be very careful about taking the consideration of our citizens if we ask them and our employees.
Thank you. Mr. O'Handley?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with the totals that Ms. Seaborn said. However, if you look at choices one and two, those are the only two options that switch the elementary schools. So, when you add up those numbers, you get a hundred and twenty or so, a hundred and twenty-five people who want those two elementary schools switched. Option number three leaves them the same. So, from the way I'm interpreting the numbers, and everyone can interpret their own way, a majority of the people want the elementary schools switched. And then, the number three is switching Metz and Mayfield. So, again, if that is also, people want that, that's also covered in option number two. So, that's why I agree that we're, seconded the motion that we go with number two. I think it's, you know, it's hard that we gave them so many choices within, you know, we should have possibly looked at it a little differently, just talking about the elementary schools at one time, and then talking about Metz and Mayfield. But I think reading all the comments from everybody, number two was really the best choice for the, that the citizens want.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Demary?
This one's tearing me up. We're wrong, no matter what we do here tonight. Some people will be upset one way, some people will be upset another. I want to make it clear that this board and previous boards have made it abundantly clear that we will not tie the hands of future boards, that we should not do that. So, back four years ago, I can't remember exactly the wordings, wording that was used, but I am sure that we did not say that we would switch this. I imagine that we said we will look at this, and that is what we are doing. So, I believe we are fulfilling our promise, just bringing it up. Before the vote, I, I'm torn. I've gone back three or four times tonight, and I've gone back and forth between two and three, you know, for the past two weeks, back and forth, back and forth. We should do two, to be fair, to Williams and Baldwin, that they should have the start times that are preferred. We should do three, because we're going to be disrupting all of those families in all four schools. They're going to be changing start times. You know, we try and be fair to the kids, so that sometimes they'll have the later start time, sometimes they'll have the earlier start time. While the kids that were in kindergarten or first grade, when we did this, are going to be not affected. So, you know, not all of those kids are going to be affected by this. It's very, very difficult. I'd like to reach into my wallet and pull out two million dollars and fix our problem, but I, I wouldn't want to, you know, take half the money out of my pocket and do that. So, I'm still up in the air. I'm leaning toward two, I was leaning toward three, ten minutes ago, and then Mr. O'Handley came up and made sense, which, you know, just throws a monkey wrench in it, that number one and number two are, as far as the elementaries, are combined. And so, it does look like most of the respondents wanted to change back. And I also want to make it clear that in, in my decision, the survey is important, but it's not the end-all. There's a lot of other different things that come into play. And so, just if we do go against what the survey says, it would be for good reason. And as of right now, and it's still early, I think I'm leaning toward two now, and that would be Mr. O'Handley's fault.
Thank you. Sir, Mr. Albrecht?
And violent agreement with Mr. Demary, no matter what we do, it's wrong. My reaction was, if this came up, we'll see do nothing. Because it affects so many people in so many different ways. And how often do we change? And how often do we become just a tunnel we blow in with the wind? Having said that, a commitment was made, we did get public input, and you know, I didn't, I didn't get a chance to read the update that came out yesterday, but when I looked at the perimeter and stuff we had back, kind of Mr. O'Handley's point, we're here, three perspectives, that pie was kind of split three wings. And I don't know if that was based upon the Democratic group, I think the responding, that is, parents versus staff, it was based upon the school they came from, I have no idea. But, you know, there was a hanging chat somewhere, listening to the Supreme Court, but there wasn't a real clear winner. So, we're here to do what's best for kids at the end of the day. And we have to support, have to, I believe, respect staff that they know what's best for children. Because we're not out there in the classroom, everyday board members, we're not out there dealing with all of the various suspicious issues. If that's staff's decision, on this one, I'm kind of going to go there, because I don't see anything less compelling than saying, this is not what's right, this is what's not, it's not like the high school's go-time a couple of years ago, where there was a whole lot of empirical data when it dealt with, you know, fire rivers and steam. But there was also other issues we were dealing with. This one's kind of just, it is. So, there was a conclusion, a little lot of talking, saying, wow, give me a point out of it, right? I guess I would say, Mr. Demary, that's actually why I put my rider in there. I go, if we have that new school, I'm not trying to hinder future voters, also make sure that we understand we're committed to building that new school, and it's going to affect the whole configuration of the city. And again, what you put in there is that it will be considered in two thousand and twenty-two, not changed, considered.
And before I just add in, and this is not his decision, Mr. Demary has the man in the head, we're two point one million dollars, which, given our presentation earlier, we should have based on two thousand and six dollars if we're funded the way we should be, this wouldn't be an issue. But we don't, so we have to make a tough decision. When I look at tough decisions, I try to look at where I learned in law school, about children's issues are at stake, the best interests of the child is the standard that we use in the law. And I've tried to do that and apply that here. To me, you can go either way, but just simply, I think that for equity's sake, Baldwin and Williams should have opportunity to go to school early. There are things that, going to school early, such as doctor's appointments and the things that are very, very hard for not only parents of students, but also for staff. We have to be sensitive to that. At the end of the day, I think Mr. Albrecht made the right point, that there are things we don't know, that we trust our staff to know, and after looking at this, and we look at the terms of comments. And thank you all, to all that commented, because we always ask for input, and we don't always get it, we got it this time. And we did appreciate, and we did look at it, so thank you. But at the end of the day, for equity's sake, and the best interests of the children, I think the best thing is to follow staff's recommendation, even though this is not easy for me, but that's where I come down on it. So, if there are no comments with that, I will read the motion again and ask for vote. A motion by Mr. Albrecht, seconded by Mr. O'Handley, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the superintendent's recommendation for option two, start times for Mayfield, Baldwin, and Intermediate, switch with Metz Middle School, and Elementary Schools Baldwin and Williams, which start time with Hayden and Round, to go into effect at the beginning of the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. This decision is to be reevaluated by April two thousand and twenty-two, if New Dean Intermediate is not under construction. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it six one.
So, the next item on the agenda is discussion of enrollment trends. Can you make that bigger, Albrecht? All right, so, you know, back, prior to the redistricting that was done for FY sixteen, you can see on the left that our, that our student count by school was, versus our student, our school capacity, and our free and reduced large percentage in each school. I think one of the goals of the, of the School Board at that time was to try and even out all of the student count and the free and reduced large population throughout all of the schools, to sort of put them all on a basic level playing field. So, you see what we had, now we see what we were proposing, the third column documents what is actually happening at this point in time. And you can see where the student counts are versus where they're going, and the free and reduced large percentage. You know, I think overall, we did a very good job with distributing the free and reduced large and equalizing our schools. You know, overall, there was student count difference among students, and, you know, overall, the average free and reduced large percentage is right, is right where we wanted to be. I think it's higher than we anticipated. And you may be able to make that same argument at Baldwin as well. So, if we can now go to the enrollment trends, now we need to go to, please go to the next. There you go. So, then, we So the enrollment, we need to look at the enrollment of all of our elementary school versus the capacity, but we'll concentrate tonight on Williams and Hayden. Can see the enrollment for Williams over the last three years, towards 728 to 733. Right now, we are approximately 20 students over capacity. What we're projecting, by the time September the 30th, enrollment is taken next school year, will be 20 students over capacity of the school. At the same time, we look at Hayden, we can see there, September the 30th enrollment for the last three years, and what's projected for next school year, 599. And we feel like that we have some excess capacity at Hayden. So one of the proposals, the proposal that we're making today is that we remove approximately, or redistrict approximately 40 students from Williams and move them to Hayden. Also, you'll see on the sheet how we stand currently on for September 30th projection for all of our other elementary schools, Baldwin, Dean, and Round. As you can see by looking at those numbers, we seem to have adequate capacity, excess capacity at those schools to be able to handle any enrollment increases that we might have in those areas. The area of concern at this point in time was Williams and Hayden. So now, I'll go further to the boundary proposal. So we've met with the School Board a couple of times, talking about changing the boundary proposal. One is if we were to incorporate all of Stonewall Road, be added to Hayden, include both sides, plus Birchwood and Timberwood Courts, and add approximately 30 students to Hayden. And you can see the breakdown of those students as they exist today. Or if we were to, if we did Liberia Avenue, is added to Hayden to include Piney Point, Willa Land, Laurelwood Courts, plus Langren Street from Liberia to Laurelwood Court, we're going to add about 47 students to Hayden, and the breakdown was underscored. So let's see if we can visualize this a little bit, allocate a bit to the map. So the map, you can see Stonewall Road is right here. The first proposal would be extending that purple line over to Stonewall Road. The other example would be incorporating this area here, adding, moving this purple area out just a little bit to incorporate approximately 47 students out into this So tonight, we recommend that we go with the option, I guess we would call it option two, which would not, which is not Stonewall Road, but which would be more Liberia area would be, Road area would be this area here, be moving approximately 47 students from Williams to Hayden Elementary School in the next school year. Are there any questions, concerns, comments at this time?
Mr. Chair, move the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the boundary proposal
change option two, moving students from Williams Elementary School to Hayden Elementary School. This will include Liberia Avenue to include Piney Point, Willa Land, and Laurelwood Courts, plus Langren Street from Liberia Avenue to Laurelwood Court. This change will go into effect for the 2018, 2019 school year.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Ms. De Mary, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the boundary proposal change option two, moving students from Williams Elementary to Hayden Elementary. This will include Liberia Avenue to include Piney Point, Willa Land, and Laurelwood Courts, plus New Green Street from Liberia Avenue to Laurelwood Court, and Williams Elementary to Hayden Elementary. This change will go into effect with the 2018, 2019 school year. So any discussion?
Sir? After looking at this umpteen times as well, the reason that I seconded this and I'm in favor of this is that these streets that were launched, switched to Hayden, are connected to the neighborhood across the street from them. Right now, we have buses picking up on that same stretch of street for two different schools. It will be much more efficient for bus transportation, and it will keep the neighborhood intact. Right now, that neighborhood is split between two different schools, so it seems to make sense that we would do that. And Stonewall Road will remain with Williams, where it is part of that neighborhood as well. Because if you look where Stonewall is there, on the northwest side of Stonewall, that is Hayden, but that's not connected there either. Those neighborhoods are not connected. So I think it's much better than the other option, and I think it's better than the way we're doing it now. I think this is an improvement for multiple reasons.
Sir? Thank you. Any other comments?
I think start off with, at the macro level, we're not students off. The problem is at school by school. I mean, they could be 2%, 2%, 1% off on three schools over two years. We have staff, we have geographers who understand what our enrollment projections are. So going back to that budget, that's five years, we're asking, how many kids are we going to have in five years? We've got a pretty good idea. The challenge is, as we often talk about, they don't come in neat packages in this particular time, they don't come in the right particular neighborhoods. And let me give the superintendent, staff, and this board credit for the courage to do something that we haven't done in this city for a while, which is redistricting. It has been really easy to make a decision on a characterization, go buy a trailer and stick it on a school site, and then you hire a new teacher and pay some more utilities. But we just talked about that. This board is not in that luxury. We are fiscally constrained, and as a result, these are tough decisions we've got to look at.
Any other comments? Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Ms. De Mary, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the boundary proposal change option two, moving students from Williams Elementary to Hayden Elementary. This will include Liberia Avenue to include Piney Point, Willa Land, and Laurelwood Courts, plus New Green Street from Liberia Avenue to Laurelwood Court, from Williams Elementary to Hayden Elementary. This change will go into effect for the 2018, 2019 school year. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it seven zero. The next item on the agenda is the FY 2018, 2019 salary schedules.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm pleased to present the proposed fiscal year 2018, 2019 salary schedules for administrators, class, faculty, athletic coaches, extra...
Second by Ms. Kiefer. Let's put the microphone, please.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Extra duty and teacher salary schedules. The revisions to the teacher salary schedules were largely made by the Teacher Salary and Benefits Committee. The formation of this committee was requested by the School Board. Our teachers' salaries are not competitive or commensurate with Prince William County Schools or neighboring school district. The Teacher Salary Benefit Committee met seven times, engaged in discussions, ultimately made the majority of the recommendations presented tonight. A comparison with proposed teacher salary scales closely resembles Prince William's teacher salary scales. However, unlike Prince William, whose last three steps, 28, 29, and 30, have the same salary, Manassas has proposed a salary increase for each step. 29 and 30 will exceed Prince William's salary schedule. The proposed changes will increase our teacher salary ranges considerably. For example, the 200-day teacher salary B-A scale currently ranges from $36,780 to $95,897. With the proposed change, the increase will be the range from $47,723 to $104,876. Depending on the step, our teachers may receive an increase from 2.61% to a high such as 16.3%. Changes to the support, style, and scale administrator, coaches, and extra pay for extra duty supplements were due to changes in separate amount, title changes, hourly changes, and so on. No monetary changes or step changes were made to these scales.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the fiscal year 2018, 2019 salary schedules as presented. Second.
Motion by Ms. Kiefer, second by Ms. Seber, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the FY 2018, 2019 salary schedule as presented. So any discussion?
Sir? As I voted on the budget, this one's hitting a little bit too close to home for me and for probably Mr. Albrecht as well. This is going to affect my household income, as my wife is a teacher. She doesn't give me any money, so it doesn't affect me, but it affects the household income. So while I am immensely in favor of this for a multitude of other reasons, I am going to abstain from this vote, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Yes. Mr. De Mary, put it well. I mean, I spoke on the record previously, and the earlier briefings talked about it starting in 2015, we put our budget reductions on the back of our staff. And we were at a point where the school system had, that had to stop. However, because we might be in potential for perceived conflict, I intend to abstain from this vote because my wife is a teacher in the school system.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I do have a comment, because this is really important, not just for teachers, but I feel like our society as a whole, our nation, I don't know how we put our police, our firemen, our teachers behind when it comes to budgetary priorities. And I think it's time, I think it's time now to really improve upon our salaries here in the City of Manassas. And one thing to consider, too, clearly, we need to attract teachers, clearly. But what happens, too, is as we train teachers, a lot of them are leaving to go somewhere else, close by, for an increased salary, after we've spent money training them, after they... You know when teachers come out of the classroom? Do they really know how to manage that classroom? I don't think so. So it takes a year, it takes a couple of years for them to be coached, listen to other teachers, be mentored by other teachers. And then when they leave, after all that training experience has been done, it costs us a lot of money in the long run, because here we are again, brand new teachers. And I think that's something really important to be pointed out here, and I think it's definitely time for us as a society, excuse me, and nation to start putting out policemen, firemen, and teachers higher on our priority when it comes to our budgets. That's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Going left? If not, we move to a vote. Motion by Ms. Kiefer, second by Ms. Seber, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the FY 2018, 2019 salary schedules as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All abstaining?
Aye.
So the ayes carried, ayes loaded, two abstentions. And thank you again, Ms. Kiefer, for the presentation, we appreciate it.
Okay.
And assuming that's the whipens for the Mass Administer Agenda Health Insurance Premiums.
Our health insurance premiums for fiscal year 18, 19 saw an average increase of 12%. This was an increase in last year, which was 8%. We remain steadfast with a 3% increase in our standalone dental plan, as last year's increase was also 3%. Our standalone vision plan premiums did not change, as we are locked into the rate for three years until 2020. New increases to our health insurance plans were shared by both the employer and the employee. The health insurance document you received identifies the premium comparisons for this year and the upcoming plan year for full-time and part-time employees. As of December 2017, our total active participants, full-time and part-time, in health insurance were 763. The total number of full-time employees that weighed were 251 employees. 27 part-time employees weighed health insurance coverage. The planned summary for all health insurance plans offered by Manassas City Public Schools have been enclosed for your review.
Thank you. I know I've already seen this in this time as well. Thank you to staff for the hard work you put in, and it's not easy, healthcare is very challenging.
Megan Mills, our relevant administrative.
Appreciate that. So thank you for the dedication and hard work, we appreciate it. Any other motion, please?
Mr. Chair, move the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the 2018, 19 insurance plans and premiums as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Ms. Kiefer, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the FY 2018, 2019 insurance plans and premiums as presented. Is there any discussion?
Sir? Just a comment. I, too, wanted to just echo the work that goes into this, as a person who knows what it goes into in a much smaller organization, if you will. It's not easy work. They make it look easy by the charts they put it on, and then they just make it straightforward. But it's a ton of hard work that goes on behind this as well, so I just wanted to acknowledge that yet again, thank you.
Thank you. As a comment, I will put the video so that I can go straight to the vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes carried, seven zero. And thank you again, Ms. Kiefer, for the presentation.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, I can vote on this because I do not get my health care from the City of Manassas.
Thank you.
And for the record, I voted on it because it's costing us more money.
Thank you, Bill, for your insightful and helpful comments, I appreciate it.
Hey, my insurance is going up, too, you know, as well, and our debt's going down.
Yeah, I appreciate you, too, any other motion?
Mr. Chair, move the School Board meeting adjourned.
Second.
Second by Ms. Williams, that you adjourned, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes carried, seven zero. Thank you very much.
I appreciate...